Good evening, I'd like to call to order the Kaiser City Council. It is Monday, December 2nd, 2019, and ask our city recorder to please call roll.
Councilor Herrera.
Here.
Councilor Parsons.
Here.
Councilor Smith.
Here.
Mayor Clark.
Here.
Council President Freeman.
Here.
Council Reed.
Here.
And Council Coler.
Here.
Thank you. We have some Boy Scouts here tonight that I've invited to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Gentlemen, if you would come to the table here and introduce yourselves, and then we will join you in the pledge. So would you tell us who you are and what troop you're in?
So, I'm Nicholas Soder, this is Manuel Haragui, and this is Andrew Valentin, and we are from Troop 167, Willamette Cascade.
Welcome. Would you all please rise? Gentlemen?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, and you are here tonight for?
Citizenship with the community.
Citizenship and the community. So if you have any questions after you've watched the council meeting tonight, please have your troop leader get ahold of any of us on the city council. We'd love to answer any of your questions about what we do here and how you can get involved as you get older, okay?
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Let's give them a round of applause and thanks. All right. So we have a number of items, but I have been asked if we would make a change in the agenda and take Item 8A and take care of that at the top of the order. Counselors, are there any objections to moving Item 8A, which is the authorizing temporary signage subject to conditions for In-N-Out Burger, to the top of the order?
No.
All right, seeing none, we will take that out of order and first send the agenda. City manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Brown.
Okay. What we are trying to do is get prepared for the imminent opening of In-N-Out, and we might as well state for the record so that everybody knows, we do not have an official date for the opening of In-N-Out. They will not release that until just prior to their opening. I believe, it's customary, though I have no control over their announcements, that they make the announcement just a couple of days prior to when they actually open. They have not shared that date with us, they have not, I believe, come to a firm conclusion as to when that date is. But it is imminent, and we need to be prepared for it. So, in conversing with them and in consideration of all of the past history that we have experienced and they have experienced in their openings, we expect that it will draw quite a crowd. And so in preparation for that, in looking at the layout of Kaiser Station and how we are actually challenged with the access points into Kaiser Station and those kinds of things, we would like to work with them and get some directional signage out there. And we are asking council, under its authority, under special events, to authorize additional signage, which includes that placed in the right-of-way, excuse me, that we allow them to place directional signage under the approval of the City of Kaiser, under the following conditions: that signage should be for traffic direction only, there'll be, which would also include the name of the business which is being directed, that may include other businesses that may need some direction, we don't know that exactly at the moment, there would be no product advertisement, signage cannot create any lane of travel or vision obstruction for vehicles, pedestrians, or bicyclists, and that we are asking for flexibility to be granted for the specific placement of signs only upon approval of city staff. So we believe that in conjunction with working with the management of In-N-Out Burgers, that we will be able to develop the best possible solutions to getting people to the right place. I did have a conversation with him today, and they are, have reached an agreement with the Kaiser Volcanos Stadium, that they will plan to actually use that parking lot to store and stack vehicles as they are queuing in line, to then be, as it were, ushered to the appropriate place in line on the premises. So that is what we are asking council to grant the staff authority to do, to allow us to work with this specific placement of signs to minimize the amount of transportation disruption that can possibly be achieved. With that, I'd be happy to answer any more questions.
All right, thank you very much. Are there any questions on the staff report? Councilor Parsons, and then Councilor Herrera.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So Nate, you didn't mention, will they have people out there directing in the Volcano Stadium itself, or just on the roads, or how, where are the placement of those people?
No, they, they are actually having a small army of people directing and holding signs, and they're actually hiring a traffic control firm.
Okay.
They do not place their employees in the right-of-ways, they actually hire outside firms to do that, that are trained to deal with the safety issues that that presents. And they literally have, I believe, somewhere in the round of 30 people.
At one time?
At one time.
Okay, thank you.
They're actually also, in conjunction with our own police department, they are going to be hiring our police department to also assist, and we'll be paying the appropriate rates.
So a follow-up to that, though, then chief, will those be motor officers on bikes? Have you had, we decide how this is gonna work?
Yes, sir.
Now it's working?
I heard you have.
Okay. You know, initially, they'd wanted us for a long time, across two weekends in a full week, and we simply couldn't accommodate that. And the timing of this is happening is particularly bad for us. We are going to give them, I think it's two cops, and it won't always be motor cops, because they don't always work every day.
Okay.
Don't work those hours, but in general, yes. Problem with that is, a couple of us have had some conversations recently, it's also gonna suck our traffic team off a river road, so that cuts both ways.
Okay. Thank you. That's, that's all, thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilor Herrera?
Pretty much answered my, I was just curious what our role was, our police department's role is. And you know, I would've been nice to see some kind of a visual plan, something tangible, but I guess that's something you guys handle, huh?
We thought about that, and they did have a proposal for us, but the concern that we have is this is most likely going to be in flux for the first period of time, and we need the flexibility to be able to say, let's adjust this and that. So for you, as the council, to have to approve each location of each sign would be unworkable for the situation.
I understand that, but the follow-up, do you have a number of, of how many signs? I'm understanding of putting some signs on the right-of-ways, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
And those are temporary, when you say temporary, is that like a week?
The estimation is for two weeks.
Two weeks, thank you very much. That's a question that I've gotten a lot, how long is the first burst gonna be, if you will? So two weeks, thank you.
All right, any other questions? Councilor Coler?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. No, Chief Teague, we're gonna use regular-duty officers during their regular scheduled time to do that, or are we using off-duty officers?
I think it's a mix of the two. We simply can't pull guys off of their current duties for that long a period of time. It'll definitely be a mix.
Thank you. And then, follow-up to Mr. Brown, what is the basic traffic pattern that we're talking about? Are they wanting to go in one exit or the other, exit the other one? What's, what are we basically talking about?
Their current proposal is, they want to channel everybody onto Kaiser Station Boulevard, which is the most direct route to the Volcanos parking lot. They will enter into the northernmost gate, closest to the stadium structure itself. They will then snake around in the parking lot for an amount of time, and then they will exit the south exit of the main exit of the parking lot at the Volcano Stadium, and then return along the street to their established entrance, and will then be queued in line on their site. So they will use Kaiser Station Boulevard to get from the stacking at the Volcano Stadium, and then when there is space available, they will queue people then to move to those, to that vacancy in line at the new line.
And you feel that'll alleviate traffic problems for other businesses in the area?
Actually, without that plan, we could not see how it would be a major impact to all of the other businesses in that general area, probably in all of Kaiser Station. So that will get the opportunity to get the cars off of Kaiser Station Boulevard and get them in an orderly fashion queued up into the lines.
And you feel confident that this will work?
We feel confident it is the best plan.
He said it right.
Yes.
Asterisk disclaimer.
Thank you. Council President Freeman?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So Nate, we know that In-N-Out has reached out to the Volcanos, but have they reached out to other businesses as well? I mean, I don't wanna assume they've reached out to Target, Outback, the other businesses that are in the general vicinity of where Outback is, to be good neighbors, I'm hoping?
We, Chris and I and Bill attended a meeting at the structure, and it was attended by the neighboring businesses. I don't believe Outback had a representative at the meeting, but I do know that they have been, they had conversations with all of those surrounding businesses.
They've also been working very closely with the shopping center owners and managers, and we know for a fact that Donahue Shriver, the REIT that manages that center, has had conversations with all of the businesses in Kaiser Station.
Thank you.
That's good to know. Any other questions on staff? Councilor Parsons?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I have one more question. I guess my concern is, is we don't want them to go into the first entrance to Kaiser Station, is that correct? It's the second one, Kaiser Station Boulevard?
That's correct.
So how, how are we gonna keep that from happening? Because during this season, it's already backed up to go in there, so how are they gonna cone that off, or, or is there gonna be signage there to say, go further down and go in? I mean, that's my, that's my concern.
Sure. Yes, there's going to be signage. They are working with ODOT to have a variable message, center sign, you know, the big freeway signs?
Sure.
Now, what it's actually going to say is, I guess, ODOT has some pretty strict rules on that, so I'm not sure exactly how it's going to say, but the intent is, there's going to be those, those large signs that will tell people to use Kaiser Station Boulevard. I think you actually suggested, Councilor Parsons, that we actually say, on the Kaiser Stadium Drive, because that will be confusing in and of itself, because if people are going to the stadium, why aren't they using Stadium Drive?
That's correct, yeah.
So I liked your suggestion, and we'll put that forward of actually saying, there are no In-N-Out customers allowed.
Well, no, I, I'm just concerned, you know, about our residents here in Kaiser, too. I mean, this is a great thing that this is happening, but we don't want that just to be so bad that people stay away, right? We still want people to, to go there. We wanna make sure that there's organization going in and out. If we can do that, then I, I think that will be great.
And there, actually, ODOT gave us some good suggestions about some other things, which we will be discussing amongst staff, about maybe some signal changing and those kinds of things. And again, this is going to be as needed, and as we evaluate the situation.
Okay. All right, thank you.
All right. So it sounds like job one is the safety and security of all the people involved, staff, residents, and visitors to our community. And I appreciate that In-N-Out has been working with, with staff. They have not had any contact with me, and I'm not aware that they have any contact with any members of the council, with any information whatsoever, so it's nice to know that they are communicating with the staff.
And I do have to compliment their management in that they, they are conscientious, they are responsible, they have a very successful business model, and they, they are cursed/blessed with their popularity. And they accept that responsibility, and I, I believe they're trying to be good participants in the community.
Well, they're joining a very vibrant economic community, as well as a very close-knit community, joining the family of businesses in Kaiser, and I look forward to getting to know some of them over time. Again, I've had absolutely no contact, so it would be nice, after they get started, maybe to say hi. But in the meantime, I appreciate your work, all of the city staff, to ensure that this will be as smooth as possible for everybody involved, and make this a very successful holiday season for everybody. Any other questions on, on this matter? All right. Council President Freeman, put a motion on the table?
I move that the Kaiser City Council adopt Resolution R. 2019 authorizing temporary signage, subject, sorry, subject to conditions for In-N-Out opening.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Kaiser City Council. All righty then. It's been moved and seconded that the Kaiser City Council adopt Resolution R. 2019 authorizing temporary signage subject to conditions for In-N-Out opening. Further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much, everybody, again, for your hard work on this. Look forward to success. So that will take us back to our regularly-scheduled agenda, and let's go back up to item, there we go. Let's see, I don't have anybody here for committee reports. Mike, are you here for planning commission or for the hearing? Mike DeBlossi?
I'm for the hearing.
Hearing. Okay. Is anybody here for committee reports? Then I will go on then to public testimony. This time is provided for citizens to address the council on any matters other than those on the agenda scheduled for public hearing. We have three public hearings tonight. The first to discuss severely rent-burdened status of the City of Kaiser, the second to, on the text amendment to the Kaiser Development Code, Section 2.403, Shared Housing Facilities, and the third is for the authorization of supplemental budget, three items. So if you want to speak to those, I will call you up for those at that time. So speaking of Mike, DeBlossi, did you want to talk during the, the public hearing, or during public testimony in general?
Uh...
Because this is, for the severely rent-burdened status?
Yeah.
Okay, let me put you then under 7A, would that be okay?
Yeah.
All right. And Carol Dorfler?
Everybody has their Christmas clothes on. Good evening, my name is Carol Dorfler. I'm a resident of...
Go put the microphone down a little bit, there you go.
Kaiser, Oregon, and I would like to invite you all, Madam Mayor, counselors, and staff, to drop by the food barrels that the West Kaiser Neighborhood Association has placed in our community. After we heard that there was a 30% decrease in food donations at our local Kaiser Community Bank, we took it upon ourselves, and you will find a food donation barrel at Copper Creek, thank you, Dennis Blackwell, and we have joined with the Southeast Kaiser Neighborhood Association, and you'll find a food barrel over at Bymart, and you all know where that is. So I invite you all, and everybody out in TV land, to come and donate to the barrel that will go directly to Marion, or, excuse me, to the Kaiser Community Food Bank.
I'd also like to point out two other, if I may, two other business partners that have food barrels out year-round, and that is Uptown Music.
Yes.
And Tony's Kingdom of Comics.
Yes.
So I'm thankful that more businesses are putting out barrels to help support people in our community through the Kaiser Community Food Bank.
Yes.
Thank you. Yes.
I would like to, with that, also add that the Kaiser Elks Lodge, the ladies of the Kaiser Elks Lodge have a barrel in the lobby year-round, and all of their food goes to the Kaiser Community Food Bank as well.
Wonderful. Council Coler?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Ms. Dorfler, do you know what kinds of food specifically they're looking for? Maybe that might help some people.
Non-perishables, definitely, peanut butter, tuna fish, noodles, pasta, some sauce to go over the pasta, that would be good, chilies. There are actually bags of soup that you can buy that make huge amounts of, of soup with just like six gallons of water, crackers to go with the soup, that would be a good thing, anything that isn't going to spoil or get crushed. Don't put cookies in there unless they're in a tin. You can put them in a tin, but if you put cookies in there, because I almost did that, then somebody's gonna throw their bag on top of the cookies, and that's gonna be the end of them, so, okay?
And there is a Facebook page for the Kaiser Community Food Bank, go there, please, and look at what the top 10 are for donations, what they're asking for as well. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Really appreciate you doing that.
It was fun. Thank you very much.
Awesome. Let's keep the good news going. Paula Guiles from the Kaiser Community Library, it's good to see you.
I sit way in the back to avoid those cameras.
Got a little crowded, didn't you?
Hello, Paula Guiles, I'm representing the Kaiser Community Library, and as always, we wanna thank you all for your continued support of our services and what we provide. We are very concerned, because we found out not too long ago from some statistics from our principal at McNary, that 45% of our incoming freshmen are not reading at grade level. So that really has piqued our interest in trying some new programs. First of all, and thank you again for the use of your lovely building for our book sale, we did make $2,835. We are very proud of that. It was very, very well attended, that's the most we've ever done during this type of year. So we're very happy with that, the community turnout was wonderful. Some of those funds are going to be used to, again, have our storytime for our youngsters in January, right after the holidays, but we are in the process now of developing a program for adult literacy. That would include, we're going to try to include children who are in middle school and high school. We're looking into some, some methods to do that and add to our program. So those funds will be well-used, we're sure. We're also adding to our large print collection for elderly folks, and we're very pleased to say that we've had a grant, that we can add some more. So we're always happy about that. I do have stories, as I always do, but this, this one was really interesting to me. I'm a, I'm a historian person, and I love to find out about things like this, but at our book sale, a gentleman came up to tell me his story, and looking through the books, he found this particular book about his great uncle, who was a boatwright in China as they were invaded just prior to World War II. And he stayed there, he, they kind of overlooked him, he was one of these guys that just kind of went under the surface, you know, that kind of thing. Well, it turns out, he was a spy for the United States, and he remained there till probably the middle of the war. And he just happened to find that book about that uncle in our book sale.
Wow.
So there you go. So along with all the other stories I've told, that was really one of the ones that caught me, made my, piqued my interest for sure. I had to find out, I do have his name, but he didn't want it to be publicly announced, but I will share it if somebody asks me. Other than that, we've had continued, often frequent use of our computers. A lot of people are looking for jobs, and they are finding them, because of course, during this time of year, a lot of businesses are employing people, and so they're coming in and using that. We're very, very pleased to have that kind of use available. That is free for anyone in the community to use. We're trying to extend our hours, but it's difficult when you're all volunteer, but we're doing our best. And again, we thank you so very much for your support, because we really do wanna provide services for our community. We're concerned about the children who need help as far as reading goes. We are having some tutors come to our facility now, into the library, and they are tutoring students in our library, using our resources. So that's kind of another thing that we're very pleased with. Several of the elementary schools have tutors who come in, as well as our reading groups, where youngsters come in, and they, by the way, helped us in our book sale. They come in and they have, it's a reading club for them. They get to keep the books that they read in the, in the group, and these children come in, they're of all ages, we have three different groups, three different age groups, and what they do is, they get a book, they take it home, they have it for a month, they read it, they come back together, they discuss it, debate it, that kind of thing, and they get to keep it. So that's also one of the things that we're using our funds for. Any questions?
Thank you so much. Councilor Reed?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I'm wondering if, if you know anything about the Salem Libraries relocation efforts and fostering out books? Do you know anything about that?
Only that they have, they're moved into a particular building, and as far as fostering out books, for us, it really isn't, the kind of things that they have would be for families to take, I guess teachers could take books and that kind of thing, but we really haven't been involved with that.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna ask, because, you know, as an English teacher, they, you know, they offered me 200 books to take for the next two years that I can, you know, that I can kind of circulate, and this is through the teen, the teen library part of that, so I, I don't know if that's something that you can get involved with or not, might be too late.
No, they really haven't contacted us, and we thought about doing that, but we do have a lot of folks who are transient, and we, we are a free library for a lot of folks, and we, through the sponsorship program, do offer free membership for people who can't afford it, and sometimes books do walk away.
Okay. Well, Sonia Somerville would be the one to contact if, if you are interested in looking into that at all, but I appreciate your...
Thank you.
Your perspective.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions?
Any other questions? Thank you so much for the work, and if people want to volunteer at the library, how do they get ahold of you?
Well, they could call us, of course, at the library, I have a, we have an email, we're on the webs, sorry, we're on the website, we have our Kaiser Community Library website, so they can look us up there. Where, of course, whenever you go by the building, that big white building that's right next door, they have a flag outside that says, "Library open, so come on in," we have applications always, and of course, we're gonna have another book sale during the Kaiser Fest, so you can always come and contact us then. So there's lots of ways to get ahold of us. Thank you.
That's wonderful. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And if people want to donate at the end of the year, you know, wanna get that last tax deduction, they can bring books to the library?
Oh, yes, we'll take books, anything, anything that people would like, as long as they're in good condition. And we do give receipts if that's necessary for a person, and of course, cash donations are only used directly for materials, they, we pay for no employees, so it's only to purchase books and that kind of thing, to make services available.
Wonderful. Thank you so much, and very happy holidays.
You too, thank you.
Thank you. Bob Bush, Kaiser Homegrown Theater. Speaking of cultural center?
Yeah. Good evening, Madam Mayor, council staff, and those watching on TV. I'm here with a couple of hats on today. First, the, as you mentioned, the Homegrown Theater, my board member hat, just wanted to invite everybody to the next production, which is the Santa Land Diaries, opens this coming Friday. There will be shows Friday and Saturday at 7:00, one Sunday at 8:00, and then next Friday at 7:00, and then next Saturday at 5:00, so you can go to the show and then walk down and watch the parade. And then it closes on the 15th at 4:00. And that's $15. Tickets are available online, you can go to the Facebook page or to the webpage. And just wanted to encourage everybody to come. And then, any questions on that one? That's one.
Council Reed? Did you mean 2 on Sunday and not 8?
There's only one shown on the, but there is, that's right, there is 2 on the 8th.
2 o'clock.
No, it says 4 on the Facebook page.
Okay.
That's, that's what I, because I thought it was 2, you know, and I looked, and I go, no, it says 4. Maybe it is 2 to 4, and I just read it wrong. So look on the Facebook page for the times.
Yes, thank you.
Any other questions on that?
All right. Looking forward to it. Looking forward to, and those of us who were smart and got season tickets, we're good to go.
Yeah. And then my other hat is I wanted to put on as a member of the Kaiser Church of Christ. Every year, we rent out the Salem Riverfront Carousel. And that's coming up on next Wednesday, the 11th. We will be offering free rides from 6:00 to 8:00 for anybody who wants to come on down. And we will feed you cookies and veggies. And I don't know if we're going to have the tamales this year or not, but we generally do. Tamales. Hand-made tamales. And that's, like I said, is free. The fun part is finding a place to park. We turn the carousel music off and we have a choral group that sings and then sometimes there's just no music.
So, yes, Councilor Herrera.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to be recognized. So it's free rides for that amount of time?
Yep.
Is that only kids or?
It's anybody who wants to ride.
What's the weight limit on that? Just kidding.
You'd have to ask the carousel.
Thank, that's very nice what you guys do. Awesome.
We've done it every year, but the first year they were open. So I don't know how long that is for sure, but that's how long we've been doing this.
Good stuff. Thank you very much.
That's awesome. It sounds like a lot of fun. Thank you for doing that. And also, I want to thank the Church of Christ for being a great partner with Kaiser Little League Park. The partnership between the park for parking, but also the cleanup day you guys do there, just really appreciate that.
Yep. Yeah, well, the parking is kind of a joint thing. They allow us to use their parking lot. If our parking lot gets full and if we're not using ours, we allow them to use ours.
That's how Kaiser rolls, right? All right. Anything else? Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Is there anybody else who would like to address the council under public testimony before we get into the public hearings? All right then. We will go into our public hearings, open public hearing to discuss the severely rent burden status of the city of Kaiser. City Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, every year, we are, because we have been determined to be a severely rent burden as defined as a household spending more than 50% of household income on house, on housing, according to the American Community Survey, to hold a public meeting to discuss the issues surrounding rent burden. Kaiser was identified as being a severely rent burdened city based on the ACHS survey. That's the American Community Survey, which identified 25.5% of our population being affected. It should be noted, interestingly, that this is a slight reduction from the 27%, which was identified last year. So we are making progress, I think. So the statute requires that when we are a city of greater than 10,000 people, that at least 25% of the renter households in the city are severely rent burdened, that we have, hold at least one public hearing. Purpose of this public hearing is to invite input and to invite an examination by the council of our policies regarding housing and the things that we can do about it. And so you will see the survey that is attached and the answers that have been supplied. I will just say briefly that we have also notified all of the housing advocacy groups that we are aware of in our region and notified them of this hearing and invited their participation to share their concerns with us. The answers to those surveys, to that survey basically indicates that we participate with the city of Salem in the Community Development Block Grant programs that allow home funds. And I don't know exactly what the home acronym stands for. I'm looking for help. I forgot to look it up before the meeting. So we participate with them. They manage the program. We hold them accountable. You get their report, their annual report every year. I know you scrutinize it and ask for information. And so all of that is, we're kind of a package deal with Salem. It's also noted that many of those kinds of things that, for example, rent control structures that many of the larger metropolitan areas use are, basically would be ineffective in our community because of the size and scale. The cost of administration of those kinds of things and the impact is something that we feel would not be productive in our community. Some of the other tools that are identified, such as adjusting the things like system development charges and reducing those, they are things that we could possibly do, but they require a restructuring, a major restructuring of those programs. For example, if you wanted to waive system development charge fees on low-income housing, that means you would have to restructure that entire program. It's a zero-sum game. And in order to reduce the fees on one, you have to raise the fees on the other. And it would also take a restructuring and a recalculation of that fee structure. We have not chosen to do that. That is something that you may choose to do in the future. So I guess the conclusion is, we are heading in the right direction. I think the bottom line is, though, it's not simply because of a direct program that we have newly implemented. It's probably more of a result of market forces and things that are at play and the employment rate and those kinds of things, which have a more direct impact on that number difference than any changes that we have made in this last year. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. I'm going to lead off with one, and that is on the systems development charges. We've done the methodology, but isn't, aren't the systems development charges in Kaiser significantly lower than our neighboring city?
They are. But the methodology of how you calculate those is regulated by statute. And so it's all, it's all directed by the amount of projects and infrastructure improvements that that plan indicates in things like our transportation system plan. And as those plans get changed and we are looking at moving into examining those plans, that will probably result in having to relook at our system development fee structure.
And then I've got one more question slash comment. On page 21, it was question 28. There was a list of the partners, et cetera, et cetera, that we work with. And I wanted to note that, do I have the right page here? Back it up. Anyway, what I wanted to point out, though, is, pause on page 20, page 21, question 28 in the study. There's a list of organizations and the answer put on was no interaction. And what I might suggest is that we do have an interaction with almost everybody on there because we are a signer on the Mid Willamette Valley Homeless Alliance. And almost every single organization listed here is also a member. So we are collaborating with a community action agency, the county housing authority, nonprofit housing providers, other nonprofits, citizen and community groups, et cetera, through the homeless alliance. And so I might suggest that for our next report, maybe we update it, taking that into consideration. Any other questions? Councilor Reed.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So as I'm looking at this report and the survey and so forth, kind of my underlying question is, what are we doing about homelessness, or not homelessness, sorry, what are we doing about severely rent burdened, severely rent burdened people in Kaiser? And for me, as I was going through this report, and I did have a conversation with Nate and Shane about this, and I think, you know, as Kathy mentioned, our efforts through the Mid Willamette Valley Homeless Initiative and those kinds of efforts, we are doing a substantial amount insofar that we can. This is a very complicated problem and it's a very expensive problem to deal with. And so things like subsidies, those are very expensive. And as we are looking at our property tax of $2.02 per thousand, one of the lowest in the state, it really ties our hands in order to be able to accomplish this, which is why we have partnerships with the city of Salem and the county and the Mid Willamette Valley Homeless Initiative and so forth. So I just, that was, those were some of my thoughts as I was reading through this, is we definitely are doing as much as we can, but acknowledging that it's a very complicated and expensive problem to address and that we are open to different ways of looking at things and we are doing our best to figure this out.
Thank you. Further comments, Councilor Herrera.
Just real quick, Nate, in the material that we were reading, that we went through, I was curious as to why or what exactly caused our, you know, we were at 27% last year. We're down to 25.5% as far as the yearly rent. Is there any factors that you see that would cause that decrease or is that not significant?
Well, remember, the definition of severely rent burden is the amount of income that is spent.
Yeah, but it's gone, it's gone down.
Right. So I suspect that there is a higher employment level that you are seeing, which would cause the burden, the rent burden, to decrease.
That would make sense. I was just curious because if there's something that's happening, I thought, well.
It certainly isn't a drop in housing pricing.
Not 1.5.
So the most direct outcome that I can see would be the employment level.
Yeah, makes sense. Thanks, sir.
Well, and to that point, what we've seen across the valley here, we get the monthly updates from the Oregon Employment Department talking about not only our very low unemployment rate, but also the rise in household income or the rise in wages. So we've seen both of those factors over the last few years, especially the last, maybe two years. And then you get some of the businesses that are coming into the area, In-N-Out is going to be paying more than what is typical for fast food restaurants in this area. Amazon is going to be paying more than minimum wage, significantly more in some areas. So we're seeing some pressure, upward mobility, if you would, on income, which I think is going to be a benefit for residents in this community. How sustainable that is and how significant that is in bringing down the burden, I think, waits to be seen. I don't know that we have that data, do we, to help us understand how that's going to play out over the next few years?
I do not.
If you had a crystal ball, I think we'd all like to know. But I think it's almost to that, to that level. We'll check on that. All right. Any other questions? What I'd like to do is, we do have one person signed up and if there's other people who want to share their thoughts, invite them up at this time. So I'll start off with Mr. DeBlossy. And other people who would like to weigh in, I will ask for a raise of hands.
Hi, I'm Mike DeBlossy, resident of Kaiser. Madam Mayor, councilor, staff, thank you. I just have some suggestions that are kind of long-term suggestions to help work on this problem. As we know, rental price is responsive to supply and demand. So two ideas that I have for, to help increase supply over the long term, for you to think about would be parking standards that we have. You can either have room for cars or room for homes. So working on our parking minimums and maximums. And also the housing mix. We had in the Housing Needs Analysis Report, it mentioned that Kaiser has a big majority of the housing style is single-family, and then you have some multifamily. And in the report's recommendation, really only pushes the percentages a little bit into multifamily housing. So we might want to be a little more aggressive, I suppose, by changing the overall housing mix. So those were just two suggestions.
Any questions of Mr. DeBlossy? Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Appreciate, by the way, your work on the planning commission that dealt with this issue as well.
Thank you.
Anyone else would like to share their thoughts on the Buildable Lands Inventory Housing Needs Analysis? Love to hear from you. All right. We have note takers at this point. Are there any thoughts that council would like to share for the record on how the city might be able to continue to address this? Looking down the line. Councilor Smith.
I feel like you're looking at me.
Yeah, I am.
I just want to remind everybody, this is very market-driven. This is something that we're going to have a hard time to control. If you go back to the pre-crash or right after the crash, builders could not get money to build. We fully have expected this in the housing industry, to have this backlash where we just did not have enough homes being built to keep up with the market. And when it jumped back, it jumped back fast. We saw values jump over $100,000 just in the Kaiser area alone. So unfortunately, with that, you know, supply-demand thing, until that balances a little bit, and I know there's been a lot more, maybe not within the Kaiser area, but there has been a lot more apartments and things built and homes being built across the way in Salem, that I believe that that's going to be a portion of those ratios as they start to realign themselves and kind of catch up to the dramatic loss that we had from those few years. So we've got to continue to revisit this and not just throw out different legislation or things like that, but allow the market to correct itself as it has continued. We're hoping it settles down, but that's just my thoughts, is that keep in mind what happened. It was like a rubber band effect. So just my opinion.
No, I appreciate that. Other thoughts? And, you know, part of our issue also is, yes, please come on down. Part of our issue while she comes is the fact that our buildable land is considered by DLC DDP in South Salem and West Salem, since we are in a shared urban growth boundary. If you would just give your name, your city of residence for the record.
My name's Sarah Anderson and I'm a resident of Kaiser. Please, thanks for letting me speak today. Appreciate it. First, I think that what the community is really looking for as far as when we talk about rent burden, the everyday person who is seeing a spike, an increase, a severe increase in their rent, are the same people, unfortunately, who are, the demographic fits a certain group of our community that are unable to be homeowners at this moment. They're the ones that are affected greatly by these spikes in rent. And I think that the community wants to know, you know, we appreciate seeing how we can fix this moving forward, but we really are trying to figure out why it's been allowed to happen in the first place. Why is there a three-bedroom, two-bedroom bath, you know, five years ago going for rent at $9.50? And now today, you'll be lucky if you can find that same place for less than $1,400. And I think you would have a hard time convincing anybody that any type of increase of property tax or insurance has been so significant that it's been necessary to increase that amount to such a large number. And unfortunately, as I was talking about the demographic, who are, you know, that nice lady who was letting us know about food donations and barrels, the same people who are needing that food donation are the same people who are having to borrow from Peter to pay Paul every month because they're unable to pay for their rent. And I think that it's a question of, are we, you know, is a renter supplementing new taxes and fees? Or, you know, are we simply kind of funding family vacations and, you know, a savings account, which is understandable, of course. In the same respect, I think that it's important for people to understand that owning a property and, you know, being a landlord, at the end of the day, if you take out the emotion of watching someone struggle to pay rent, it is a business. You are running it as a business. You're doing it for profit. You're not going to find much business in any area. That is not their main goal, to make a profit from what they, you know, what they're, what they have. Sorry, I'm very nervous.
You're doing fine.
So I think that I, you know, when you rattle your brain trying to figure out what exactly can happen to prevent this from happening, it's really important before we're able to move forward to figure out how we got here to begin with. And unfortunately, because of the new law or bill being in place after the first of the year, you're seeing a spike in rent right now before that takes effect because people are, you know, they're seeing because people are, you know, they're seeing a cap being put on what they can increase. And so unfortunately, now we're seeing even more of an increase in that rent for people. So that's just kind of, I don't really have, I don't bring any answers to the table today, but just kind of making it aware that I think people really would appreciate kind of an understanding, you know, and also it being broken down into terms that, you know, people can just kind of bullet points of, here's why, here's what we're doing. You know, the City of Kaiser has contributed and had to because of certain A, B, and C, why we've had to, you know, increase fees or cost and how that's affected, you know, the renters. Because some of that obviously is inevitable, you know. But yeah, I'm rambling now, so that's just my piece. And yeah, just obviously figuring out a way to move forward, but really understanding how this, you know, was allowed and happened anyway. So thank you for letting me talk. Appreciate it.
Thank you so much. I appreciate you sharing your thoughts. Does anybody have any questions? All right, thank you so much. Really appreciate that. Very thoughtful. Anyone else have thoughts to share? Okay. Councilor Kohler?
Thank you, I hesitate to say too much, really, but I had a visit with a landlord the other day that was talking about the expenses that have increased just in the last year for them. And they were saying, I'm not sure if I can continue to be a landlord. Maybe I need to just sell my places because I can't rent them for as much as the increased fees and things for me are going to be. So I think there's two sides to look at that, too. Where you talked about robbing Peter to pay Paul. The landlords sometimes have to do that, too. This particular landlord that I was talking to has five units. And when somebody came in and they rented to them on good faith, everything looked good, they went four months without paying any rent at all and then tore the place completely apart, it costs them $40,000 to repair the place. So there's two sides to that, too.
That's been a difficulty for some landlords, for sure. I think to the point of the House Bill 2001, I think that's what you're referring to with the rent, rent control. That one created all sorts of havoc in the market that has reverberated throughout the, throughout our community. And since we have such a low supply, a low vacancy rate, it has an incredible burden here as well. Mr. Upli?
Yeah, and I think about that bill and its long-term lasting impact. So since rent truly is a supply and demand ratio, it's very clear economic principle, supply goes up, you know, and demand decreases, then rent decreases, et cetera, et cetera. With the new bill in place, though, since it caps the amount that landlords will be able to increase, there will be a disincentive to reduce rent as the supply and demand curve would typically allow because it will take them so long afterwards to make that up. I'm just not sure that that legislation was really useful or addressing the purpose that legislature had in mind. So it's just one more piece that we're going to have to, 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 to think about. When we attempt to control the market, the market has a way of finding itself around those controls.
Correct. Yeah, well, it's kind of like water around a rock. You put that rock in the river and the water goes right around it and goes, what rock? But it does create ripples. And in this case, ripples affect people. And in a very significant way, because one of our basic human needs is housing. And, you know, that's why we are so invested as a city, as a community, in the Homeless Alliance, to find ways to help people get sheltered, remain sheltered, and then eventually be housed in a very stable manner, either through rent or purchase. So, you know, this is part of that long strategy. The problem is that the resources that we have in terms of land, programs and so forth are so limited. But I'm glad we're in, I think a lot of our answers are going to be, continue to be in the community-wide alliances we're in, like the Homeless Alliance, where we can collaborate to help find answers and to relieve the burden on as many people as possible. We clearly can't do it alone. Otherwise, Planning Commission would have brought us a whole laundry list of things we could have done, but those smart people couldn't come up with a long laundry list either. So I don't know what else you need from us, Mr. Brown, in terms of input?
Deliberation.
That, I, I think you've given deliberation. You've received deliberation. That's what is required of you for your consideration for future actions. So nothing, nothing specific is required of you except to actually hold this opportunity to have these discussions.
All right. Any closing thoughts, Councilor Herrera?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just curious, does this mean that we're in that situation with 25%? Does that qualify us for any, any kind of funding, federal help or anything?
Well, it qualified us to actually get the Housing Needs Analysis and Buildable Lands Inventory done in a timely way. That was actually funded with state funds. As far as federal funding goes, I am not aware that there are additional funds that that qualifies us for. But again, working through our regional partners, I think is the approach that we need to focus our attention on.
Well, and an action we're going to be taking up here shortly in terms of accessory dwelling units is another piece of the multi-layered puzzle.
Absolutely, I was just going to say that.
Great minds. Still trapped. Any closing thoughts? All right, then we'll close the public hearing. Thank you all for participating. And if you have additional thoughts, please be sure to share them with us via email. That takes us to item 7B.
Do we not need a?
Is there a motion?
There's a motion.
Okay, let me go back to it. My bad. I got ahead of myself.
Oh, that was my bad.
Seven, okay, there we go. Okay, thank you. For keeping on track. Council President Freeman?
I move that the Kaiser City Council directs staff to submit the required information to the state as required by House Bill 4006.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded that the Kaiser City Council directs staff to submit the required information to the state as required by House Bill 4006. Discussion. So I have one. Is it possible to amend that question 28 to show our collaboration or is this a final document?
Yeah, the survey was required to already be submitted.
Okay.
And so I think your suggestion that we pay attention to that next year would be more appropriate.
Okay. Just want to take advantage of the opportunity.
We had a deadline that we had to submit it by, which was before this meeting.
Okay. Okay, any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Motion passes unanimously. Now we'll go to item 7B, which is a text amendment to Kaiser Development Code, Section 2.403, Shared Housing Facilities. Open the public hearing. City Manager.
Madam Mayor, Mr. Brown?
So much talking tonight. And my, and my voice is, my grandchildren gave me a special Thanksgiving gift of some bug.
It's the gift that keeps on giving.
Walking Petri dishes. So on November 13th, the Planning Commission held a public hearing to consider the amendment to shared housing facilities. Basically, what this was triggered by is we have long allowed accessory dwelling units, but we have, we have called them by a different name. We've called them shared housing units. And so it actually started out with a very simple kind of fix to make sure that we are in alignment with the new statutory requirements. But it kind of blossomed and to a couple of important policy questions. So what the intent of this was is to bring us into compliance with the new legislation that we have been talking about. And that would be, the things that we are hoping to accomplish would be to eliminate parking and owner occupancy requirements, which we have in our current language, but which the statute now prohibits. We would limit the size of the, an attached ADU to 40% of the structure. There's a humorous anecdotal story, which I won't bore you with, but basically 40% is a, almost, not exactly, but it's a round number of if you have 100% on this side and you have an attached part, that's 75% of that. The total is, the 75% is 40% of the total.
Okay, and I do math.
So in other words, the intent was that an attached ADU could be no, no more than 75% of the rest of the house.
Gotcha.
So the rest of the house and the ADU total to 1.75, 175%, if you will. Or in other words, 40% for an ADU. It's actually 40. something. I'll talk to you later.
All right. I'm writing the equation.
So the recommendation from the Planning Commission is to change the size limitation for a detached ADU, including existing outbuilding conversions from an outright allowance of 750 square feet to a maximum of 900 square feet and/or 75% of the primary dwelling unit floor area. This is what the City of Salem allows in, as their percentages. You'll notice that the attached and the detached actually have a slight kind of different language on the implementation. But, so to cut to the, to cut to the major policy discussions, is increasing the size allowance for detached ADU, is that, do you consider that necessary and desirable? Basically, the Planning Commission had testimony presented by an individual that expressed his desire to have a larger ADU allowance, which would allow a more comfortable two-bedroom, two-bath accessory dwelling unit and would allow more housing opportunities for things. He cited the example of single moms seeking housing. The issue, and the policy issue that I think is important for the Planning Committee, sorry, the council to understand, is throughout all of our discussions with infill development, with this current focus now in trying to provide housing for that missing housing middle, affordable housing, those kinds of things. The concern is, if we simply allow the construction of another home on a lot, as in two, two housing units on one lot, one of the planning commissioners expressed the fact that, well, you're just simply building something that will be renting for $1,400 a month, just like everything else. And where is your ability then to address that missing housing component? So I think your question is, are you comfortable with the Planning Commission's recommendation to increase that? And even though there is a cap limit of 75%, you'll see that there was additional testimony that was received, written testimony, from a person who actually develops this kind of housing. It's, is concerned that having both is, his preference would be just to have a cap and not go through the gyrations of whether this is, this one is larger, whether it needs setbacks, and those kinds of things. And the other question is, is consistency between attached and detached, the 75% limitation versus the 40% overall percentage of the structure? Does that matter to you? That one's less of an important policy question. That's more of a mental gyration thing when you read the code. So we have included in your packet both that material that was given to the Planning Commission, the proposed language that, as it exists today, and that information that I have just presented. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right, are there any questions on the staff report? And then we will dive into these two questions and then into the code itself, the proposed attached code. So just in general, then let's dive into any, well, this is deliberation. So we need to hear from folks if they want to testify first and then we will deliberate on these policy questions. I don't have anybody signed up to testify on the shared housing facilities. Is there anybody who would like to address council on this issue? Okay. So we'll press pause. Do we need to close the public hearing before we deliberate on the policy discussion?
What I usually advise, Madam Mayor, is there's no need to close the public hearing until you're ready to put a motion on the table.
All right. Then let's leave that open at this point. So let's get into policy discussion for item number one. Is increasing the size allowance for a detached ADU necessary or desirable? Thoughts on the change from 750, I think that's what it is, to 900? Councilor Reed?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So for me, I'm still deliberating in my head about this, so I have definitely not come down one way or the other. But it seems to me that the question here is, what is the purpose of ADUs? Is it to provide more flexible options for that, that middle piece? Or is it to provide loopholes for other development? And which, which is, which is more what we want in our community? So that, that, those are the questions in my mind that I'm trying to figure out. So just putting those on the table.
Exactly. Councilor Smith?
I have a great concern about that. Over the last several years, I've received many phone calls regarding this particular topic and financing of ADU units, what's allowed, things like that. And there are many people who have been waiting for these changes to come through for the purpose of putting another additional property on there for income-producing purposes. And so that brings me back to the 750 cap, where it's really supposed to be a, we call them in the lending world, mother-in-law units, a mother-in-law cottage. Something to that effect, where we are just creating an opportunity for a family situation, not creating, as you said, a loophole. And it, I was at that meeting and it was thrown out there pretty quickly. And it was a builder who came to testify with a story about why we needed to go to 900 square feet. That's a pretty significant difference. I mean, I get the whole two-bedroom units and all of those things, but I don't think that that's in alignment with what we were trying to accomplish with this change. So I would hesitate to go any higher than the 750. I think we've, how long has it been at 750?
Long time.
Long time.
The, the, if I may, Madam Mayor, the 750 has been around for a long time. We used to have a cap at 25% or, I believe, in addition to the 750. And so some places couldn't build 750. It's been at least four or five years ago, they just decided, just make it 750 and they did away with that cap.
And, and I did kind of catch Shane's conversation about the fact that he liked that because it was way easier to cut and dry.
Way, yeah.
And it could, it could really create more work than it's really worth when it comes down to it. Because it is really, the way this reads is super confusing and I'm glad you can do the math. I personally can't. I personally think we should leave it at the 750 and, and not go any further. That's just my opinion, but.
I'm going to go, Councilor Herrera and Councilor Kohler?
And I, I trust the people that know this, this stuff really well. And I have not heard nothing compelling to really move it, what do you call a mother-in-law?
A mother-in-law cottage.
The 40-year-old son-in-law, that's what I'm going to.
It happens, too.
But I have not heard nothing compelling to make it other than the prop, the, you know, the expansion of the opportunity to. And, and there's nothing wrong with that either. But to me, it's not enough. But I don't, that's just me. And I'm not, like I said, I trust the people like Elizabeth that live in that world and that know the facts. So I'm not really there yet, put it that way. So that's what I said, thank you.
Councilor Kohler?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The other factor that we don't really see every day, like you say, it's called the mother-in-law house. like you say, is called the mother-in-law house. More often now, it's, it's the daughter with one or two kids' house. And in that situation, the two-bedroom house really is a lot better for them than the seven hundred and fifty one-bedroom house. So there may be some other consideration there.
Well, I think we need to be careful. I don't believe that a seven hundred and fifty precludes two bedrooms. It's, there's a lot of structures out there with two bedrooms at seven hundred and fifty. It isn't two bathrooms, et cetera, et cetera, but, so it's not luxurious, but it is certainly doable and livable at seven hundred and fifty.
Counselor President? Oh, yeah.
So how many units a year have been processed at the seven hundred and fifty level? Would you say?
Eleven.
Versus, what's the anticipation of its bump to nine hundred? I mean, are we really producing anymore by making the change? Is it anticipated we would produce more units because of that change?
To be perfectly blunt, no, I don't believe it will produce anything. It might spur more rental property investment, perhaps.
So it, it may, it may alter the use of those units, but it won't necessarily create additional units.
Correct. That's my feeling. And again, we keep coming back to preserving our neighborhood fabrics that we have tried to be very sensitive to and tried to be very conscious of the impacts that are created by these kinds of programs. We have more impacts that are coming as a result of the Senate bill and we haven't seen the last of them yet. However, we do try to say we are paying attention to our neighborhood structure and our community fabric. And when we have infill development and small lot developments, we typically have a lot of people being very concerned about how inconsistent that is with their neighborhoods.
So I want to weigh in on two things. One, the first home that my husband and I bought was nine hundred and thirty square feet. Three bedroom, one bath, living room, dining room, kitchen. And that's where we were until, you know, we had two children, you know, family of four living there. So when I saw nine hundred, that's a home. So what I'm wondering is, you know, the ADU, the accessory dwelling unit, to allow for, you know, the smaller space to be used, there's one just over the fence from my backyard. So I know what this looks like and feels like in my own neighborhood and it's fine. But what we're talking about here, you're getting a nine hundred, two-bedroom, two-bath, three-bedroom, one-bath, that's a home. So the property could be subdivided, it could be replotted, where somebody could purchase a small home in a neighborhood. So what I'm, what I'm seeing here is that if we bump this up, essentially you're allowing a second home on a property without it being classified as a second home. So am I missing something? Okay. So what I'm, I'm not hearing from anybody that there's a desire to change the policy from seven hundred and fifty to nine hundred. Am I correct? All right. Counselor Kohler.
I do have one other little question, a side question, I guess, in a way. If I were gonna add an accessory dwelling unit to my house, is there an easy way to, is there a difference between financing a seven hundred and fifty accessory dwelling house and a nine hundred square foot accessory? And then the other part of it, how does that go on the tax rolls? And how does that affect the tax for that particular piece of property?
Goes up. I mean, at, at that point, you start to also come into an issue of whether or not that's now considered a duplex or is this really an ADU? So, and we don't know, those rules have been recently changed. So my concern is when you start to get into ADU versus duplex, are we also setting people up for failure? If you build a house that's as big as another one, that then they no longer, whether or not we say it or not, the government's gonna say, that's a duplex, you need a bigger down payment. And you just kind of can go way down a hill you might not want, have intended on doing. If that makes sense? And the rate's higher too.
Right, but then is, is there any, is there any real difference in financing a seven fifty versus a nine hundred?
I think it will depend on the original size of the original house and how it's set up. Generally, no, but it just depends.
All right, are we good to move on to policy two? Or are we pretty much done with this one? Counselor, Counselor President Freeman?
So I just, I have a couple of thoughts. When I read this and I met with Nate earlier, it was very confusing. After it was great. Before, when I just read all this, it was a little too much, you know, nine hundred and all the percentage. I can tell you that in the city of Portland, there is a couple of organizations that are looking at ADUs to meet the housing crisis and that missing middle. Part of it is several organizations are coming together to build ADUs on properties to either house people in the ADU or maybe transition, let's say, an elderly person out of a larger home to into the ADU. And so then the, the larger home then is rented to a family of, let's say, three or four kids, depending on the size of the house. It's a pilot project right now. They are running into some financing issues, but at least they're looking at the missing middle, which is, I think, really where we're trying to go here. I, I personally am not in favor of increasing it to nine hundred square feet. I really like the seven fifty for a lot of reasons because I really believe it is that mother-in-law cottage or you could call it children-moving-back-in cottage. I mean, you could call it whatever, but I don't believe, you know, that adding, increasing it to nine hundred is really serving what I believe we're trying to do. But most importantly, I think we're trying to maintain our livability in our neighborhood, so.
All right, I think that we've got pretty clear direction on policy question number one. Let's go to policy question of, Mr. Johnson.
I'm gonna need Nate's help a little bit here, but if, if generally the indication from council is to stick to a seven hundred and fifty cap and not, if it's not nine hundred, you don't need the, or seventy-five percent or whatever. And so I don't know that you need to address number two with regard to, to that issue. Unless you have problems with the other part, which is the attached sixty-forty split, which was approved by planning commission for the attached one. The, the percentage problem, if you will, about being inconsistent goes away if you just stick with the seven fifty.
So I've got one question, though. There was a portion talking about if you have a small primary residence and you want to build, the ADU is actually larger. Now, we may have just taken care of that with this. So I don't, if somebody wanted to build an ADU that was larger than the primary residence, although I can't imagine a property in the city that would fall into that, couldn't they build the structure and then call that the main property and the, the original house, the ADU?
That is a very good thought. Mine is the same. Problem is, the setbacks are greater for the main structure. And so the ADU has reduced setbacks. And so just to flip-flop that would require us to do some, some court, some sort of setback trade or something, which was not anticipated in this proposal. But, so the, the basic problem is setbacks are different for ADU. In order to try to, to make them more allowable and more encouraged, they have, I believe, a five-foot setback to the rear yard, whereas a home has a fourteen-foot setback. So we actually examined that very issue with your neighboring property, which he could not meet the setback requirement.
It's a big lot, but yeah, there was some constraints and even when they took out the big tree, they were able to at least put the ADU back there and they did a lovely job with it. Okay, so it sounds like policy question number two then? Questions, yes, Counselor Reed?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So the letter that was included in the packet was regarding a gentleman with a six hundred and fifty square foot house who was concerned about the seventy-five percent cap, I guess. And so for, for me, anybody with less than a seven hundred and fifty-foot house or square foot house, I don't really have a problem with them building an equal or greater if it's only seven hundred and fifty. I mean, yes, there, there may be some logistical issues to deal with that, but, but as far as I can tell, there's no real need for the seventy-five percent cap if we have the seven hundred and fifty cap.
That's right.
So that's, that's my thinking.
And, and to reinforce that thought, we have also reinforced our development standards on design standards for accessory dwelling units that they have to make, make, match the original structure in design and, and character. So I think, I think your thought captures, I think your thought is reinforced by those design standards that we have already implemented. In other words, that small of a structure, if there's one that's equal to that, if it's matching the character and, and design of the house, I, I see no harm, no foul, because both are very small units.
Or if somebody wants to build a primary, essentially would be a new primary residence and relegate the original one, which is underneath the seven fifty cap, could that not be done? Well, you could remodel too, I suppose. There is that. But sometimes some of these cute little houses, they were built solid. Yeah, you don't want to tear down something like that that is just going to stand the test of time versus some of the newer constructions. Some are better than others, some are really solid and some are less. So, so with the way it's structured now in the, the language, the code that was being proposed, allow for a larger second structure? The first one is under the seven fifty cap or at or below the seven fifty cap?
Yes. So if I understood your correction, or your question correctly, and I'm not sure I did, this would allow if you have an existing home, regardless of the size, you would be able to build a seven hundred and fifty square foot accessory dwelling unit?
That wasn't what I was asking.
Okay, sorry.
I was asking, in the case of this person with a six hundred and fifty square foot home, if they built a second structure on their property that was larger because the, the existing home is under the cap of the ADU, the seven hundred and fifty ADU?
I think, so in other words, what you're asking is, could someone come in, build a new house bigger than seven hundred and fifty square feet and call the first one the accessory dwelling unit?
Yes.
Only if it met the setbacks, I would assume.
Right, but I, I think that would be accomplishable if, because the new structure, new str, well.
It would be a primary, so it would have to meet the primary.
It would be the primary, so it would have to meet that.
It'd be pretty unusual, I think, to have a situation where it works, but I think it'd be allowed.
We've got some big properties.
Yes, there would be nothing that would outright prohibit it, but they have the setback issues.
So they have to work with you on the.
And if it's possible, we would consider variances or those kinds of things. Depending, every case is different. And it's so difficult to say, well, I can guarantee you because the first, next person in is gonna be, oh, I had no idea that that was gonna happen. But there would be nothing prohibiting that and nothing that would prohibit them from building a seven hundred and fifty square foot structure and calling it, even if, even if the home itself were six hundred and fifty square feet and they wanted to build another structure, they could simply call that additional structure the accessory dwelling unit, have the reduced setbacks of that. There's, it's even allowed in the front yard setback under a conditional use permit. We have been very flexible in where we allow accessory dwelling units. We've been tried to be very responsive to the market and the differing conditions that we see in our community. So.
Okay. So that answered my question. So are we good on then, policy item two? Okay. Are there any, is there anything else that people want to discuss prior to? I believe that was it for that part of the discussion. Do we need to, with the code itself, were there any other questions on the proposed code? All right. Are we good to close the public hearing, Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Public hearing is closed. All right. Counselor President Freeman, do you want to put a motion on the table and then we can deliberate?
Sure. I move that the Kaiser City Council direct staff to prepare an ordinance with findings to adopt the ADU with the limit of seven hundred and fifty square feet, both attached or detached.
The, if I may, Madam Mayor, the, the attached one is just a sixty-forty split.
Right.
So it doesn't have the seven hundred and fifty as the proposal.
Okay, sorry.
So I think, I think the discussion, the council was to take the planning commission's recommendation with a change of detached to seven hundred and fifty and eliminate in the percentage.
Yes. Okay, you're good with that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, now I'm good with that too, so I'll stick on that.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded that the Kaiser City Council direct staff to prepare an ordinance with the findings, with the cap for the detached ADU staying at seven hundred and fifty and the allotment for the internal ADU at a sixty-forty split. Did I get it right? Okay. Discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Great discussion. Thank you all. Let's go to item seven C, which are three resolutions. The first is authorization for supplemental budget administrative services contingency. The second is an authorization for supplemental budget, general fund, police department. And the third is an authorization for supplemental budget, community center fund staffing. I'll open the public hearing. City manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Wood. Madam Mayor, City Council, tonight I have three budget adjustments for you to consider. The first is in the administrative services fund, general administration. As is our policy, when we do our annual budget, we put down what we expect the base premium will be for our liability insurance. And then as claims are received, we come back and move money out of contingency to provide for those claims. So tonight I'm requesting that we move six thousand dollars out of contingency into the liability insurance line. The second adjustment is a follow-up from a previous meeting where we were presented with approximately seventy-two hundred dollars from Advantage Heating as a donation to the police department. I'm requesting that we recognize and appropriate that money into our budget.
You guys speak up.
Is this gonna work better?
I can't hear you.
Yeah, I'm getting a text that you can't be heard.
Try the other mic.
How about this one?
Yes. Much better.
Crazy, okay. Start over. How about we just nod our heads? It sounded really good, thanks. So the, the second adjustment is recognizing and appropriating the seventy-two hundred dollars that Advantage Heating had donated to the police department. At this point, nothing is certain as to where it's going, but it looks like it's gonna be for briefing room improvements. The third adjustment is for the community center fund. At our previous meeting, we adopted an additional position, created an additional position. This is to fund that position for the second half of this fiscal year. And with that, if you have any questions?
All right, thank you very much. Are there any questions on the staff report? Counselor President Freeman?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So Tim, I know on with the police donation, you said it would go to the briefing room? Is that what you said?
At this point, we don't have anything locked in stone as far as what we're spending it on, but I do believe it's going to, improvements in the police briefing room.
And our, our wonderful business that made this donation, they didn't have any requests of where the funds would go? I'm just asking, I have no idea.
Just, just the police department.
Okay, awesome, thank you.
All right. Further questions on the staff reports? Counselor Reed?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, so I, I was at the, the presentation of the, the Advantage Heating donation and first of all, making sure that we write some kind of thank you or acknowledgement to that. I, I don't know who would be in charge of that, but just, oh, done already, you're awesome. Thank you. But, but, but also they, and I don't know that this was a first-time thing and just to make, make sure that they can see what their money is going to and not to say that we have to commit it to one place or to the other, but just to be able to say, you know, you were instrumental in helping with this. I, I think is a, is a benefit to anybody who's gonna invest in our community in that. in our community in that respect, so, anyway, that's my thoughts. You're awesome, thank you.
Council Parsons?
I have a question about the community center fund staffing. So we're increasing it by $45,000 just for half a year?
Correct. It's, it's really going to be dependent on who we get. Potentially, with someone in this position, we could get a tier one, tier two PERS person, which would be a significant increase, so this is on the high side.
Oh, okay, okay.
Well, that's true with the allowing retired PERS to come back full time and work for a PERS employer.
This would really be the worst-case scenario.
They didn't go through with the governor, though. They can only still work 1,020 hours, if they're retired.
In the state agencies, we're not a state agency.
Oh, that's true. Sorry about that.
Chief?
Yeah, I didn't want to correct Tim, but I am anyway. So in our briefing room, we have a number of tables in there. We found that when we crunch the tables all together, we get better participation during briefing. So I worked with DOC, and I purchased a table from DOC. That money's already committed. It's about $3,400, I guess, for a table that seats 18, and then we typically have about 22 people at briefing, so we'll have most people around the table, a few standing up. What I told Advantage Heating that we were going to use the money for, in my wonderful letter to them, thanking them, was improvements in the training room. Presently, our AV system is spotty at best, especially with the audio. We have three displays, I like to see the two side displays operate independently of the center display, so we're working on making that happen. We figured it would be pretty reasonable to make that happen. We received one quote for $24,000. I bet we can find something on eBay to get that done for about $3,000, so we're leaning in that direction. I also told Advantage Heating that we were going to use the other half, or whatever's left over, to fix a surveillance system that we have. That sounds a lot more sinister than it really is. That was looking to be about $3,000. I ended up, on eBay, finding it for about $1,000, and so we used other monies for that, and that's why the briefing table came into play. But, so with response to your question, yeah, we know just what we're doing, and we let Advantage Heating know.
Absolutely, thank you. Using those funds the Kaiser way, I appreciate that.
All right, any other questions? I don't have anybody signed up from the audience who would like to share their thoughts. Is there anybody who would like to weigh in on these supplemental budgets? All right, seeing none, anything further before we put a motion on the table? Okay, I will close the public hearing. Council President Freeman.
And just for clarity, these need to be done individually, Shannon, or can they be...
The resolutions...
I have three separate ones in the packet, so I'm just asking.
If there's no objections, you can make a motion for all three. You do need to read the titles. Are there any objections on council? And the reason we ask that is because occasionally when councillors say, hey, I want to vote no on that, or yes on this, then that's a call for a question of division, is what it's called, but if there's no objection by the council, you can move all three of them at once, as long as they're all read.
All right, any objection to doing all three at once? Go ahead, Council President Freeman.
I move that the Kaiser City Council adopt the resolution R. 2019, Authorization for Supplemental Budget Administrative Services Contingency, Authorization for Supplemental Budget for the General Fund Police Department, and Community Center Fund Staffing.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Kaiser City Council adopt the resolution Authorization for Supplemental Budget Administrative Services Contingency, a resolution Authorization for Supplemental Budget General Fund Police Department, and resolution Authorization for Supplemental Budget Community Center Fund Staffing. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. That concludes our public hearings this evening. We will go on now to item 8B, which is a resolution authorizing the mayor to send a letter of support to the League of Oregon Cities for revisions to the bylaws to create a people of color caucus. City manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Chris, Madam Mayor, and council. Councilman Herrera had been working with Sean O'Day at the League with regard to creating a local government people of color caucus within the League of Oregon Cities. The Oregon School Boards Association recently established a similar caucus, and the League of Oregon Cities currently reviewing, considering amendments to the bylaws. Councilor Herrera and Mayor Clark asked to put an item on the agenda with regard to supporting the bylaws revision and establishment of that caucus, and so we have prepared an attached resolution authorizing the mayor to send a letter of support to the League of Oregon Cities, and you can see that as attached to the resolution, I believe. So that is before you tonight, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right, are there any questions? For the record, Sean O'Day is the executive director of the Mid-Valley Valley Council of Governments, not at the League of Oregon Cities.
Sorry about that, I'm still way back a few years.
Yep, time warp. Councilman Herrera.
And just so you know, we've been working on this for quite a while, it's taken a lot of attention. I'm very thankful for Sean O'Day's expertise, he's an attorney, and I surely am not, but what I am is, I'm one of those guys that, seven years ago, I was approached by many community mayors and whatnot, and they would always ask me, Roland, how can I engage our Latino community? And they would always, you know, and different people would come up to me, and I always thought, well, we should have a way of doing this, and I've always, and I've been working this for a long time, I've talked to folks, it's increased as far as numbers, and I feel that it's a very strong addition to increase and to advise and to help elected officials of color, not only them, but work with the League in unison in developing leaders, and not only that, any kind of help the League of Oregon Cities can help. And a lot of it's related to engaging our community, and the community is changing, so I think that we should get ahead of the situation there, and I think that I really appreciate the support of this council. Just looking around at this council, for all we've done, we're the right council to start this. I really believe that in my heart, because, you know, the work we've done with our community of color has been looked at by other communities as a leader, and I really believe that, you know, thank you to the mayor and the council. And I think there's a big step that we're taking forward, and I really appreciate what we're doing here, and my, again, kudos to Sean O'Day, because he's the one, the driving force that helped me get this thing going, so, thank you very much. By the way, this resolution will be, Madras is waiting for me to send it to him, and same thing with Hermiston, and same thing with other communities, so we're leading again, so I'm very proud of our council. Thank you.
And I just want to add that the former mayor of Aurora, Bill Grubb, he was also with me on the board of directors for the League of Oregon Cities, is something that he and I discussed when we were both on the board, on how we can continue to help bring people together in conversation, how to can we inform the board, how can we help communities share information and ideas rather than having to reinvent the wheel. This, we're talking about Latino communities, but this means of color, so you're talking about a wide variety of communities throughout Oregon, and also helping inform the League Board on how to be more effective in making sure that there are not unintended consequences or barriers that have been created. So just want to give a little background there. Council Reed?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to observe here that this is the difference between diversity and inclusion. Diversity is tolerating differences, whereas this form of inclusion is actively reaching out for a variety of perspectives. We want to know different people's input on different things, and it's not just tolerating and guessing and inferring, but it's actively seeking to include those perspectives as part of policymaking, and so I think that's a really important thing that we need to do a whole lot more of in Oregon in general, and I'm proud that we are leading this charge in this respect.
Council Parsons?
Yeah, I just feel, I just need a little bit more information, so does every, in order for the League of Oregon Cities to change their bylaws, does every city need a letter of support? I'm not understanding how this works, because this is all the information you gave us, so...
So this will be going to the packet for the League of Oregon Cities Board of Directors when they take up this measure, or this proposal at their meeting?
February.
In February?
The February meeting, February board meeting. So this is just going to be supportive information for the board to take action, and under the leadership of Mike Cully, who is the current executive director, he has been very proactive in trying to bring, you know, small communities, large communities, rural, urban, and he's been very open to finding more ways to have the League of Oregon Cities represent all the cities across the state.
Thank you.
And just to add on, that was very well put, Council Reed, and just to add with, you know, they say that diversity is being asked, invited to the party, and inclusion is being asked to dance, and that's the difference. Thank you.
Councilor Kohler.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As I'm sure you're aware, that I've been going to a lot of Latino Business Alliance meetings this last year, and I've been impressed with the way that they have recently merged efforts with the Chamber of Commerce here in town, and if, as long as that type of thing, that type of improvement, that type of collaboration can go on, this could be a very good thing.
Thank you. I agree, absolutely. Other comments? Council President Freeman?
Just a couple. One, I appreciate Council Herrera talking about his involvement in this with the caucus and getting it going. I guess was a little surprised, not that I don't support this, but that, I mean, the letter of support is on the agenda, but we didn't know it was even headed this way. I know it takes two people to put something on the agenda, and I don't know, well, if you read here, it says the consent from two or more additional council members, so I am assuming because the mayor and Councilor Herrera put this forward, that's why it made it to the agenda. Am I correct in reading the council rules 6.4?
Right, no, the city manager, I indicated that, I got an email from the mayor and Councilor Herrera, and I checked with the city manager to ask if this needed to be on the agenda, or we needed any others, and he indicated we could put it on the agenda.
So it is two?
It needs to be three or the city manager. A total of three or the city manager. The mayor sent the email to, and asked, do we need an additional one? I brought it up with the city manager, and so that's how it got put on the agenda.
I guess when I read it, that I don't read it as a city manager, that just says advise a city manager. Again, I'm not debating that this is on here, I guess it's a process question for me, because I know when we've wanted other things on the agenda, we've had to have three counselors actually say yes, so I'm just trying to make sure that I understand the process.
And I'll let Chris speak for himself, but I think frankly, we put a ton of stuff on the agenda without checking with the council, and so it's just a judgment call on items that are not, you know, strictly routine, that seem pretty straightforward, so.
Yeah, and that was, the determination by me was, this seemed like a fairly straightforward issue, I didn't anticipate a lot of controversy or political debate on it. You know, we very often support the Oregon Cities on their initiatives, and so I consent to allow it on the agenda without going through the hoops of finding somebody, of calling somebody else and getting anyone, getting another voice to push it forward.
And if I may, Councilor, I mean, Mayor?
Yes.
If I may, I just want to apologize, because, you know, originally, it was the date of December 6th, that we were meeting o'clock, so that's how it originally started, to try to get this thing going, because otherwise we'd have to wait. Well, now, because of other forces that we have no control over, and now we already, we're here, and normally I would have given everybody a heads up, sort of, but being that we were like against the clock to try to get, because they were doing their bylaws, so Sean and I had been working literally every day on this thing, and we kind of pushed it through, and now they moved it all the way to February, so, but here we are, but I do apologize for not bringing this earlier. I did talk to the mayor, I kept her up pretty much on what was going on, so, the way it was brought up, it was kind of all of a sudden, but we were meeting o'clock originally, that's why it was kind of like, but I do appreciate the effort, thank you.
And I appreciate that clarification as well, and I look forward to having more people of color involved in making decisions on this council and throughout the state, because they are a voice here that is not at the table, so thank you.
All right. Would you like to put a motion on the table, Counselor?
Sure.
Council President Freeman, let's get this going.
I move that the Kaiser City Council adopt resolution R. 2019, authorizing mayor, the mayor, it just says mayor, to send letter of support to the League of Oregon Cities for revisions to the bylaws to create a people of color caucus.
And I proudly second it.
It's been moved and seconded that the Kaiser City Council adopt resolution R. 2019, authorizing mayor to send letter of support to the League of Oregon Cities for revisions to the bylaws to create a people of color caucus. Further discussion? Councilor Kohler.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Do we have any idea what the makeup of this caucus would be, how many members, or anything like that?
When we wrote this up, we were saying people, you know, our vision is to be inclusive, you know, but right up now, we're trying to identify people of color. I have a Vietnamese young lady that's helping me, and there's a black folks, I've been in contact with 13 people that are elected officials and people of color, and all of them are writing letters, putting their name on our letter. Like when we met, I thought, you know, Sean says, no, you got to start with people of color, you know, that's, he's really strong, but eventually, like, I believe in inclusion, and down the road, once we establish what we're going to do, the bylaws and whatnot, I can see where anybody could join, like I'm, like, we're NACP, that type of thing, you know, so it's one of those deals where we're forming just to try to be a help and a resource to the League, at the same time also to the elected officials, and there's so many good things that are going to come out of it, you guys are going to see, because we kind of, I kind of, I kind of look in the head a little bit here, but everybody's going to benefit from this, but originally, it's for people of color that are elected, those are the members we're starting off with, put that way, so, does that answer your question, sir?
Yeah, so you're saying that they have to be an elected official?
Oh, yes, oh, yeah, in good standing. Not only elected official, you have to...
In good standing?
Yeah.
I was just wondering if I could join in a good standing role.
Well, you'd have to be in good standing. Now, the reason, it's just lawyer talk, and believe me, I've been hanging out with Sean for a while, and the way he puts it is, you have to have, the lawyer in the room laughs, right? The way it's worded is, you have to be, you know, along with the bylaws of LOC and all that, believe me, so that's how we started.
Thank you for the additional...
It's a start.
There's just a lot of gray area that I just didn't understand.
And I would hope and expect that at our next conference, that there'll be reporting out, an opportunity for some roundtables.
Right.
So I think that was something we'll probably send on the League as well as they plan for the 2020 conference, which will be here in St. Louis.
Right here.
Right, yep. Council President Freeman?
So just to further expand, Councilor Kohler, are you, you're looking statewide coverage, correct?
League of Oregon Cities is statewide.
Okay, I understand that, but a lot of times when these type of caucuses or organizations are filtered, it really is more metro or valley central, because that's where the majority of the populations live, and I just want to make sure that we are making sure that we've got rural representation as well, because rural communities are very different from our metro and urban communities, and so I just want to make sure that when we're looking at that, we are looking statewide.
Quoting from the, our original document, members would be comprised of any elected or appointed member of any city in Oregon who are active members in good standing, there it is, with the League of Oregon Cities, and identify as a person of color. The activity of the caucus would align with the League's bylaws and so forth, so that's the original document. Okay?
Yes. And to Councilman Herrera's point, there's also interest from Hermiston, because they have people in their city council who identifies people of color and so forth, so we have rural communities that are very actively engaged as well, but that's a very good point, make sure this is statewide. Further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. That takes us to our consent calendar. Council President Freeman, would you read the items on tonight's consent calendar?
Sure, we have four items tonight. Item 9A is a resolution amending the Charter Review Committee, amending resolution R. 2019-3001. 9B is a resolution authorizing the city manager to award and enter into an agreement with CNM Excavation and Utilities LLC for Water Main Replacement Project 2019-2020. Item 9C is a resolution declaring the house at 1900 Shamawa Road North, Kaiser, Oregon, to be surplus and authorizing its demolition. Repeal of resolution R. 2019-2019. to be surplus and authorizing its demolition repeal of Resolution R 2019-2980. And then the last item, 9D, is approval of the November 18, 2019, city council regular session minutes.
Thank you very much. I'm going to pull item 9D. Are there any other pulls? Okay, Counsel President Freeman?
I move that the Kaiser City Council adopt the consent calendar, items 9A, B, and C.
I second.
Consent calendar, items A, B, and C have been moved and seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. I pulled the minutes, there's a couple of small corrections. The deputy chief of Marion County Fire District is Ron Lee. It's Mike Welter, who's the board chair, so the names got mixed up. Ron Lee, yep. And then I wanted to clarify, under administrative action, we were talking, it was item A for the waiver for the League of, no, the Midwellhammet Valley Council of Governments Dinner. It says that the waiver kind of went with the position of chair. Actually, hosting the annual dinner goes with the role of the chair and that'll be passed in the gavel to the Shamaketa Board Member Jackie Frankie after this year. So it's not the waiver itself, it was the hosting of the dinner is part of the board chair function. So just want to make sure we're clear on that, so in case somebody read that and go, oh, good, this will be wait forever for the cog.
Do you want to make those corrections in the motion or would you like them to be brought out?
I'd like to go ahead and make them in the motion, so we just consider it done. So I'm going to go ahead, Counsel President Freeman, you want to do that or?
Mm-hmm. Okay. So I move the Kaiser City Council adopt the approval of the November 18, 2019, city council regular session minutes as amended.
I second it as amended.
All right, any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. That takes us then to our council liaison reports. And Counselor Kohler, can I start with you tonight, sir?
Oh, sure.
With your very festive holiday tie, I might add.
It's that season.
It is that season.
And speaking of that, tomorrow night is the, is the tree lighting ceremony. At 6:00 PM it starts and they expect Santa Claus to come at 7:00 PM down at the normal place where the tree is. So that's the first festive thing. I'm really excited that I've got some grandkids that are going to be there with us, so that's really good. So the, for Tuesday, the Storm Rider Advisory Council meeting has been canceled, so that will not be a conflict for the tree lighting. And then Wednesday is the community concert holiday band here at 7:00, I believe.
Yep.
And then on Wednesday the 20, or Wednesday the 5th is the CASA Dinner, the fundraiser dinner.
Awesome. Thursday, CASA luncheon.
CASA luncheon at?
It's on Thursday the 5th.
Thursday the 5th. I got the date right at least. It's not the day of the week.
It's Thursday the 5th.
Thursday the 5th, and that's at Salem Civic Center, I believe.
That convention center downtown, yes. So go early, please, for parking.
Thank you. And then I was pleased to see the scouts here tonight, which was kind of exciting to see because this Saturday is scouting for food. So if you, if you got a bag this last weekend on your doorstep, encourage you to fill that up and they'll come pick that up this Saturday morning. And then Saturday is also the date that we're going to go to the Gubser Neighborhood as a council from 6:00 to 8:00 PM, the Miracle of Lights. And then?
Saturday at 6:00. Saturday the 7th at 6:00.
Okay, at 6:00 and then?
Taking notes.
Good.
I'm glad I don't show up.
Good, so I'm getting some of my notes right, too. So Monday is the work session and then, then I go to 1212 Latino Business Alliance and then also the Traffic Safety Bike Ped Committee. And then, I'm thinking, oh, yes, yes, it is, this Sunday, or this next Sunday is the Salem Youth Symphony Concert at 3:00 PM at North Salem High School. There's a lot of Kaiser kids involved in that. Encourage you to go to that, it should be a lot of fun. And then Saturday the 14th is the Jingle Dash that the Chamber puts on and the Toys and Tinsel Parade sponsored by Salem Health. Which then brings us to our next council meeting.
We're going to just be holiday, all holiday up by our next council meeting.
Right. I also would like just to mention, just a couple of things. Kaiser Community Dinner, we had about 400 people there. Thank you, everybody, for coming and helping support that by serving and visiting with people. It was a lot of fun. And then we had a Little League Task Force meeting, too, which, I'll let somebody else report on that.
I think I can cover that. All right, thank you very much. Counsel Reed, also very festive with your Santa earrings.
Oh, yes, well, again, tis the season. Well, Counselor Kohler said virtually everything I was going to say, so. That's great. Just adding that we have a Southeast Kaiser Neighborhood Association this, this meeting, this Thursday at 6:30. And also the Kaiser, or I'm sorry, McNary Music Festival is happening, I believe, the 10th, 11th, and 12th. There are various groups doing, it's different every night.
Band Orchestra and Choir.
Yes, the Band Orchestra and Choir mixing up their various groups and there'll be something fabulous going on every night. I guess rather than cite all of these community events, Kaiser Times did a fantastic job of posting a whole list of things to do in the sea, in Kaiser and the surrounding environs. And so, take a look at that. Also, there's a, on the Kaiser website, from the Kaiser Festival Activities Board, there's a list of activities as well. So also, I guess I just wanted to add to that, the various concerts and events that the local churches are hosting. Tis the season for many of those activities and so just, I'm sure that they would all be wonderfully welcoming to visitors who have interest in those concerts. So keep an eye out for those as well.
All right. Counsel President Freeman, what you got?
Pretty much everything's been said. There is no West Kaiser Neighborhood Association meeting this month. They take the month of December off, but please plan on attending the January meeting as it's the annual time for election of officers and Board of Directors. The Planning Commission meeting has been canceled in December, I hear, which was nice because we had to rearrange the Charter Review Committee and so we are going to take that meeting, so that's really nice. I do look forward to seeing everyone at the tree lighting tomorrow night. And I just want to thank everyone who's collecting food for the members of our community that are needing a little of assistance this time of year and all through the years. So I appreciate everyone who donates to that. And then, because I've said this before, but it is really, really dark out there and I see so many people walking in all black and unfortunately, and then they have animals and they're black or dark and you can't see them. And so please just be really aware of people in your neighborhood on Shamala River Road, people that are walking or cycling, just, you know, just please slow down and be aware of people in our neighborhoods. Thank you.
Absolutely agree with that. And those little reflectors, you know, look great on the dog's collar, too, so you can see them walking along. I really appreciate that. Also, the elf crew that dressed up the city.
Oh, my gosh, yes, I didn't put that on my list. Oh, so bad. Yeah, so there was 21 volunteers who put up the ornaments along River Road, Cherry, and Shamala, and then I'm not sure as many elves put up the tree lights on Saturday morning. So thank you to everyone that did that. And R and R Tree Service who brings their large truck with the bucket that actually makes it now to the top of the tree. So, because the fire department's bucket does not go to the top of the tree anymore. So thank you to everyone.
It's been well cared for and has grown big and strong. I love it. All right, Counselor Smith?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Wanted to say thank you so much for Dan, Counselor Kohler, setting up that, serving at the food bank. That was, or at the church, the community there. That was fun. It was really fun. I was really glad to teach Chris some efficiency factors on moving plates. It was driving me crazy. Yeah, that's, I was like, he said something. I was just like?
Something to do with efficiency.
Yeah, keep moving it this way, quit doing this. It was driving me nuts. But it was a good time, it was a good bonding moment, so thank you. And I did hear the lady ask if we would be willing to come back and I, for one, would love to. I think that was a great opportunity to get out in front of the community. Wanted to thank Carol for showing up and bringing to our attention about the food bank. That's kind of a soft spot in my heart. My best friend serves there and she said that there's been nights that there's not enough food and that just breaks my heart to know anybody in the city of Kaiser's going without. So thank you to the West Kaiser Neighborhood Association, South Kaiser, for reaching out and doing that. Very critical that we make sure they're okay. And then Charter Review Committee has been moved to December 11th, Tracy, is that right? At 6:00 PM. So anyone who has interest in that, I would love to see you there as always. So that's all I got.
All right, thank you. Welcome back, Counsel Parsons.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It's cold here. That's all I have to say, is it's cold. So, see, Dan mentioned the tree lighting tomorrow night and I'm sorry that I missed that dinner, I was on a ship. They were serving me versus me serving them, so I had a good time. We had a chamber board, chamber government affairs meeting just to kind of go over what the year entailed. It was very short. But upcoming in January, they're going to have, I think it's Commissioner Cameron's going to come and they're going to talk about, or is it Bill Post and Kim Thatcher? I don't remember now, I'm all mixed up and confused. One of the others coming, I think both, yes, coming to the January Chamber Government Affairs Meeting to discuss the upcoming short session in February and what's going to be going on with that. So that'll be a good meeting to attend. Also, on the chamber, when you mentioned the Latino Business Alliance, that yes, they are, the chamber and them are in partnership and any business that belongs to the chamber can join the Latino Business Alliance for an extra $100 a year. So it's an opportunity to get involved with the Latino Business Alliance as well. And everything else you guys mentioned, so I think I'll just be quiet now and freeze.
We'll get a blankie. All right. Counsel Herrera?
Everything's been covered that I'm going to, but I do want to kudos to Dan again for doing that. And that was more than 400 people there, I guarantee you. Don't you think so, Chris? I believe it was closer to five, really, but that was, it was very wonderful. You know, when we do those things together, it's great, you know, something other than business, having fun and serving people, there's nothing like that, so. I, kudos to you, Dan. Tomorrow, we have the Family and Neighborhood Impact Committee meeting and everything else, I'm going to be at the tree lighting and all the same thing that everybody mentioned. CASA lunch. I will say something, there was a little game this weekend over in Eugene that I attended. And that's where I missed Bruce.
You were not bringing yourself.
I didn't bring my flag, so.
Remember the article in the Oregonian, though. Remember the article in the Oregonian?
It was not pretty.
Okay, good. Just so you remember.
Anyway, Thanksgiving dinner, I served dinner to a marginalized fam, marginalized family, my family. And it was a lot of fun and we had, we had a great time. I'm getting ready next weekend, I will be in Denver to go see John Leguizamo, my good friend, so. Last thing, a reminder this holiday season that it costs $0 to be nice to retail workers and servers, don't forget. Okay? Thank you.
You're here. Just a couple of things. On the 21st, I went to the Oregon Transportation Commission. We delivered the biennial report from the Midwellhammet Area Commission on Transportation, MWACT. One of the big issues is how is the OTC going to use the collective wisdom of the Act across the state since we don't have prioritization of projects right now through Connect Oregon? So we had a really good conversation with them. It was a good opportunity for the new commission members to meet members of the Act and it was over at Spirit Mountain, so they were able to hear more directly from folks in the Midwellhammet area and from the Confederated Tribes who are a member of our Act. 21st, we did have a meeting of the Kaiser Little League Task Force. We had a great conversation with leadership from the Little League Organization, McNary Youth Baseball, heard from West Coast Premier, and talked about options about, first of all, you know, what have we brainstormed in terms of what the park needs for operations? What have we brainstormed in terms of how that could be operationalized? And then talked about options for what that would look like if we didn't do a five-year maintenance, you know, three plus two, which is what we've been doing, but looked at a long-term lease for the facility for stability, which addresses one of the major issues that our task force has addressed and been bringing up for this last several months that we've been meeting. So some of the proposals are being put together. We will meet again in mid-January, hopefully to finalize a recommendation to come to city council. So stay tuned for that. It was a great conversation and I was really glad we were able to get everybody together on that, on that issue. I went to the Marion County Veteran Services Organization Ribbon Cutting on the 22nd. This was a, we're the last, excuse me, county to establish our own VSO. They're located just south of downtown and already are doing fabulous work for many of the veterans in Marion County. And they don't just sit in the office waiting for people to come to them, they travel throughout different areas throughout Marion County to make sure that they are reaching out to veterans and bringing services that then, and their benefits that they need to know about and helping them get what they need. So congratulations to Marion County and the Veteran Services Organization. On the 23rd, I did go to the McNary Holiday Bazaar, which supports McNary Clubs, Activities, and the Junior Air Force JRC. Very well attended. They were really happy with the turnout, with the money they were able to make for the clubs and the vendors also did well, a lot of small local artisans and local small businesses that were there. So thank you to all of them for supporting our McNary Clubs and activities. On the 26th, we have SCATS, which is the Salem Kaiser Area Transportation Study, and we moved forward with funding for, additional funding for two of our projects, which is, it was the alignment, not alignment, it's the signals on River Road, getting them connected through the intelligent, the ITS system, whatever that stands for.
Intelligent Transportation System.
Okay. I was kind of going there going, intelligent transportation. And I'm, anyway, insert joke here. So anyway, funding for that and also for the design for the Verta Project, which is also going to be very important for getting the sidewalks complete, bike lanes and so forth, safe routes to school, et cetera. I was there when Santa arrived at Volcano Stadium on Saturday. In the infield, there were about 1,000 folks that came. Lots of kids got to go visit Santa and it was just a wonderful community event. And speaking of volcanoes, a few of you may have heard that Major League Baseball had this notion of contracting by 42 teams, including the Salem Kaiser Volcanoes. And you may have also heard that we object to that notion, as does Minor League Baseball. So I've met with Jerry Walker. There is a field activity afoot to get good information to Minor League Baseball to support the Minor League in the negotiations with Major League Baseball, which is really what this is all about, to be perfectly blunt, and that they do not try to make decisions for communities like ours when we have a Minor League team that is such an important part of our local identity and local community. And quite frankly, it's such a great way to see professional baseball right here in our own community. As more information comes available, we'll let you all know, we'll let the community know. And I want to say thank you to everybody who got online and signed that petition to send to Minor League Baseball so they can also make the case that the volcanoes, just like teams across the nation, have the support of their local community. So stay tuned on that. Oh, and by the way, the volcanoes are honored, and I believe it's going to be tomorrow, by Minor League Baseball for the efforts of Jerry Howard and the entire team in supporting our veterans with our patriotic weekend and then the year-long activities that happen through Volcanoes Cares. They are recognized out of the 170 Minor League teams for their excellence in service to our veterans. So congratulations to this wonderful team that Major League Baseball doesn't seem to understand needs to be stay in our community. Did I say that? Did I say that loud enough? I will say it louder if necessary. Also, coming up, in addition to all of the holiday activities throughout our community, I will meet on Wednesday with the SEDCor Board of Directors, that's the Strategic Economic Development Corporation, will be getting a report on the Salem Hospital Expansion. And then, this, right after that, the Midwell Ammit Valley Council of Governments Executive Committee will meet and set the agenda for the entire board later this month, talking about the annual meeting dues and other services that are being provided to our three-county area. That's all I got for my report, and then I will turn it over to our city manager under other business. The time is provided, blah, 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 let's start that one again. The time is provided to allow the mayor, city council members, or staff an opportunity to bring new or old matters before the council that are not on tonight's agenda. City Manager?
Madam Mayor? Tracy? Tim?
Nothing as well.
One question for Tracy. So, is the recruitment for the community center assistants still open?
Yes, it's open until January.
Okay, so, for the procrastinators, all right, thank you.
Chief Dean?
Just a reminder, it's been mentioned a couple of times, that the Holiday Lights Parade is not this weekend, but the following Saturday. Parade's at nineteen, seven o'clock. The Jingle Dash Five K Run Walk is at six o'clock. River Road will be closed about five thirty. You can still cross at Shamala until about seven, where I've been posted for twenty years, so I'll see you there if you need to cross.
Go. Nothing tonight, thank you. Mr. Brown?
The only thing I wanted to add is something fun in that our annual quilt display is now hung and in the gallery, and it's quite, quite enjoyable, and we'd invite everybody to participate and go out and enjoy the handcrafted work of, of fine artisans in our area.
Mr. City Attorney?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
All right, thank you very much. Written communications, I did get, let's see if I can get my email up here. We did get one. I should have punched this up earlier. We got one, I believe, Tracy, you got that, it was a, a thank you from some folks that came here to our community center, and it was a thank you to Allison and Christian for their wonderful experience right here in, in our community center, and how they very strongly reflected the warm hospitality and customer service that the city of Kaiser is famous for. So, I wanted to make sure everybody heard about that, and I know that was forwarded on to them as well, but thank you to Christian and Allison for helping people feel so welcome in our, our community center. Great job. I do want to state for the record, and I didn't mention it, but we did have it up here, we did have one letter from a person who was concerned about the traffic flow and some, their questions that they were asking about how we're gonna handle things with In-N-Out Burger's opening. I feel that we addressed many of the concerns and questions that they raised, but I do want to acknowledge that we did receive the letter from?
Karen.
Yes. Thank you. Kevin?
Walker.
Walker, okay. So, questions about the other businesses, questions about the seating, and, you know, how we're going to be able to accommodate many people coming and visiting our community. So, I really want to say thank you, that he took the time to write this very thoughtful letter, and that we did receive it, so, so we didn't feel like we passed over that. Agenda input, we have a work session next Monday, starting at six PM on emergency preparedness, and then we will meet at, on December sixteenth, at seven PM in regular session, and then we will take a break till the new year, on January sixth, we will meet again, seven PM in regular session. Is there anything else for the good of the order? All right, the time is nine sixteen, and we are adjourned.